We'll call the regular meeting in New Ulm City Council for August twentieth, two thousand nineteen, four thirty P M. to order. First item on agendas, your consent agenda items, what's your wishes?
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on any of them? See none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item number two point one, public hearing for noise variance for the Green Mill Best Western Rocktoberfest, Oktoberfest event. And that's for, let's see, October fourth, fifth, eleventh, and twelfth. Public hearing. Anybody like to be heard? Nobody want to be heard? Anybody in the council have anything? Nope.
Staff receive any letters or calls?
Not in my office, no.
Okay, not in my office either.
All right. We have nothing. Entertained a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll offer a motion to close the public hearing, offering the resolution, waive the reading, and authorize the noise variance to permit amplified music in the parking lot adjacent to the Green Mill and Best Western Plus, twenty-one oh one South Broadway for October fifth, fourth, fifth, eleventh, and twelfth.
Second.
We have a motion and a second off the resolution, waived reading. Any more discussion? See none. Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President.
Yes, motion carries. Item number three, annual appointments. And I actually have nothing on that.
I think that was stuck in there in error.
No annual appointments.
Okay, then we'll go on. I couldn't find no writing on it, that's what I was wondering. Okay, item four, license and permits, tobacco license transfer. That's for Erickson Oil Company to Apple Green Midwest to Freedom Value.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? See none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item four point two, tree service license, and that's for Adams Lawn Care. That's for, from August twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty.
I'll offer to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? See none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item four point three, three point two malt liquor license transfer. That's also the same thing. Oh, that's the one I had. Let me go on to the next one. Item five, renew Herman Heights Park conception.
No.
Wait, wait, no. The other one was tobacco.
One was tobacco.
All right, okay. All right, back to the alcohol.
I think we're all kind of trying to figure that out.
Both have been in a row here.
I'll offer a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Any more confusion? Nope. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, no. Motion carries. Ah, we'll go to old business. Renew Herman Heights Park conceptual schematic design. Chris?
Yeah, so before you, you have the schematic design, and we're looking for approval, so we can order the construction documents and bid package. And we're kind of on our timeline right now, so we can potentially get, get the project done, potentially in time for the baseball tournament, but and this is kind of a design that we've been working on that, that works out. Getting pedestrians in and out, added additional parking spaces, and turnarounds for buses to have tour groups come to the monument, to really turn this into a park that is a destination that you're not parking on a dirt lot. This, this park is one of those parks in the city that it draws tourism here. People come from across the U S to see the Herman Monument, and the design that has been chosen and we would like to move forward with kind of exemplifies that, adds additional parkland to it. And while we are looking at removing some trees, we are adding an additional two trees to that. And so with that, we did receive one letter from the Tree Commission that had concerns about the removal of the thirty-three mature trees and replacing them with thirty-five smaller trees. They did have some alternatives that thought could be considered, and that's improve existing sightlines on Monument Street in conjunction with the reconstruction of the retaining wall, reduce the speed limit on Center Street to twenty-five miles an hour, reduce the number of parking spaces and/or rain gardens to reduce mature tree removal, move the proposed Monument Street intersection to the east to avoid removing oaks along the West Park boundary, encourage ride sharing to reduce the need for parking spaces, and continue to improve developed and undeveloped parks to just first use among parks to encourage biking and walking. You know, and with that being said, this project is about change, and we're changing the park for the better. And yes, there is pain in losing thirty-three kind of mature trees, but we're replacing them with thirty-five smaller trees, and in time, those trees will be mature. We're changing this park from dirt parking lot, grass parking lot, and looking at traffic safety all in one go. So, you know, it is my opinion and staff's opinion to move forward with the concept as proposed, because it meets the needs of the community and will turn this park into a bigger destination than it currently is.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions, concerns? Step up, name, name and address for the record, please.
My name, my name's Lisa Langer, thirteen hundred Oak Street. I'm a member of the Tree Commission. The Tree Commission, we found out about the plan for the, I mean, there's been a lot of information in the newspaper about the retaining wall, but the situation with the removal of all those trees, we were not notified of that. We found out about it in the newspaper, like everybody else in this town found out about it. I, I'm, I'm not aware that people really understand that you're going to be cutting down twenty-one beautiful, mature oak trees and replacing them. It, it takes a long time for a tree to get that big. Also, I know you've designed for parking for eighty-nine, when I, I did read somewhere that the most there's ever been up there are weekends, maybe at graduation time when seventy-seven spots are needed. So does it need to be that big? It seems preposterous to me that it's a city park and we're going to be cutting down trees, beautiful legacy trees in a park, just to make it just cookie cutter style. I mean, the, the design is nice, but there has to be another way, and I'm just wondering if I, and I'm speaking for the mem, the other folks on the Tree Commission. There was another person who wasn't able to get around to sign the document. And I know there was, I also, there was another email that was, was attempted to be sent today with concerns about this configuration, but because of the Comcast being down, nobody has gotten that letter. I just ask if there couldn't be some alternative, and again, speaking for the Tree Commission. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any concerns?
I guess it's hard to tell from the, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Dave.
Um, Dave Schonberg, Community Development Director, and I've been involved with this project a little bit. I think, you know, when you think about Herman Heights and what is taking place or proposed to take place, you have to go back to the two thousand nine master plan that was done for the park. And there was a plan that was prepared on how to lay out this particular park area. And one of the goals was to provide parking for seventy-five to a hundred cars. There were a number of other goals amongst which was to preserve as many trees as possible. Now, we did, when it came to parking, we did conduct a survey latter part of May, first part of June on weekends, counted cars. And we came up with, I think our high was seventy-three, but we did have some, three occasions where we were above seventy vehicles. So that's kind of, you know, an indication that we do have, you know, a parking demand up there. And it tends to vary depending upon the event that's taking place. When Herman Fest is up there, which is coming up in a couple of weeks, we can't provide enough parking. Now, when it comes to parking, there really isn't a good option up there if we have more than we can accommodate. I mean, where do people go? We park them on Center Street, which really isn't a safe location, or otherwise, we're into the neighborhood. So that's something that, that we want to avoid. You know, Herman is our number one park. It probably is the park that the community is most identified with. And so in considering the layout of the park, we did follow, again, the plan, but it was where we tried to, we're trying to do a balancing act. You know, we're trying to get as much parking as we can. We're trying to make the park, tried to expand the size of the park a little bit. And yet, we want to preserve as many trees as we can. So that's the process that we, that we kind of went through. One other thing I would like to note is that what we have to date is a conceptual plan. You know, it's basically, they sat down, they kind of looked at it, drew it out, but the next step is to do, you know, more detailed plans. And in going through that process, it would be my hope that we would be able to identify opportunities to increase the number of trees either planted or increase the number of trees that we can save.
Thank you, Dave.
I do have one question, and maybe Steve can answer it, or Dave. Are our rain gardens, because of the acreage we're doing, we have to do those, Steve?
Uh, Mr. President, City Council, the, the rain gardens are a function of impervious surface that is created. So they have been sized, as Dave mentioned, the conceptual drawing, to accommodate that particular impervious surface. If it's re, the impervious surface is reduced, there could be an opportunity to reduce the size of the rain gardens.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I guess I'm, what trees, is it the little pink ones that, and those are the ones that are going to be removed? Where the pink markings are, or can we tell on the schematic?
It's basically all the colored trees. All the colored trees are the ones going to be removed.
So a lot of them are from the parking area?
Yes.
Not necessarily from the park side and the hillside or?
Well, I guess I don't have any problem. You got to do what you got to do, and I think if we have to take some trees down, we have to take some trees down. Herman Monument's going to be there for another few hundred years, a plus or a minus, and hopefully longer than that. These trees are going to grow back, and so these trees are a hundred years old. A hundred years from now, we'll have trees a hundred years old, so. I, you, you got to, you don't want to start building around trees. I've seen sidewalks in this town built around trees and everything else, and I don't think it's the right thing to do, so.
And I know a comment I'll make, I actually stopped up yesterday when I did see this plan, talked to Mr. Schonberg about it. We talked quite a while. He brought up, you know, the comprehensive plan. I don't know if you, Dave, you want to give him that example we talked about over the diocese when we did the, the road through? We were worried about all the white oaks, and we found out they were going to come down, disease-wise anyway.
Yeah, when we did one of the diocese plats, those of you that have lived in the community for a while remember Stan Schneider's farm. And he had a pasture area up on top of the hill, and he had a lot of oaks up there. And so when we did the subdivision through that area, we went out of our way to try to preserve as many trees as possible, and they were oaks. Now unfortunate, well, there, there were trees within the street right-of-way area. And so as, in order to put in streets and utilities, we had to remove trees. And when we started taking those trees out, we found that a lot of them were on their last legs. They were, you know, decaying. So, you know, trees also have a life, so, you know, it, I'm not a tree expert, and I can't say that the trees up in Herman Heights are the same as the ones that were in Stan Schneider's pasture, but trees have a life too.
Anybody else? Dot, entertain a motion?
I'm going to offer a motion to approve the renewed Herman Heights Park conceptual schematic design and order preparation for construction documents and bid package.
I'm going to second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
I guess, you know, I just want to apologize to the Tree Commission. You know, when we're looking in, at, at something like this and we're looking at removing that many trees, we should probably remember to involve them in that so that they, you know, can give an opinion and, and kind of inform us. I don't think it would have changed this outcome, because I, I think that they're more on the parking lot side, and that has always intended to be parking lot. But I apologize that you weren't involved in that decision.
Any more discussion? See none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item five point two, renew Recreation Center conceptual schematic design. Chris?
I have Linda from J L G give a brief presentation.
Okay.
The kind of how we got from the initial concepts to, to the schematic design that we're bringing before you. Linda?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I'm Linda McCracken Hunt. I'm a principal at J L G Architects, and I'm leading the design team on this project. And this process of schematic design has been very collaborative with members of your community on the committee that we are working with. And many of the members that have been participating are also members of your renewed committee. So just to give you an overview where we are now, we are finalizing the schematic design phase. And we have been on board for some time now. We have floor plans, we have worked out all of the space program. We understand our budget at nine point five million dollars, construction cost. And we have been working with R J M Construction. Brad Barrickman is here from R J M, who's prepared of the cost estimate. So we are at a great point to update you on the status of the project. And you can see that the phases that will follow will be design development and construction documents. We are looking at bidding this project around the first of the year, January twenty twenty, with the goal then of starting construction in the spring of twenty twenty. And so I'll give you a little bit more information on that. We've had a number of meetings. This is a list of all the meetings that we've been having through the course of this since early March, and the groups we have met with and the steps we have taken, and it's been very collaborative. Great group here in New Ulm working with us. This is the existing building, and the building was originally built in nineteen seventy-eight and nineteen seventy-nine. We went through a, a design process that started with bubble diagrams, clearly wanting to improve the situation with one front door instead of the two that are there now, and have everything come through that front entry to the various activities that can occur at the Recreation Center. We love this drawing, because this is actually feedback from rec staff and others on the group that redlined up what they wanted to see. So this drawing became a, a really great blueprint for us to move forward into our, in the development of our plans, the client sketch. We looked at a couple different ideas early on. One was renovating the pool, adding a new pool, the warm water learn-to-swim therapy pool, having a separate addition for fitness and a separate addition for gymnastics. We also looked at this idea with the fitness addition, and then gymnastics in the existing pool, having a larger pool addition with two new pools. So these were early ideas. We took that one a little further. And, and this is where we have developed some ideas here with how to do the pools and fitness. This one had the playground at the north end. The disadvantage of this option is going down a fairly narrow corridor to a very active space with the playground. We preferred the playground right by the entrance and where the new pools are, so we went there further. This is a, a entry sketch of, what we're looking at is a precast shell on the addition. It's very loose at this point. This, this design continues to evolve, clearly marking the entry from the parking lot, having a lot of glass into the fitness area. And this is design inspiration from Ulm, Germany, and the patterns that occur in the buildings there, and looking at patterning this precast concrete to give it some texture and expression. These are case studies of other recreational facilities we have done. Here's an example of the lap pools with the warm water pools, the fun things kids like to see with slides and climbing and zero entry. Here we are with fitness on the main level with the walking track around it. This particular facility has fitness right in at the entry, and it's really a very safe and welcoming part of the entry to have people feeling like they're participating in their fitness around all the activity that's occurring. So where we are today at the conclusion of schematic design is, this is the site plan. We are adding more parking. We have, looking at the numbers here to make sure I get it right, two hundred and twelve existing spots to remain, forty-three new spots that replace existing, and then thirty-six new for the building addition, so we will be adding more parking. We have placed the parking here on the site. We have the potential ponding area for stormwater management on the north end of that, which is also, this is a low point in the site along here. One major entry right here, clearly marked for everyone to get into the entire complex, including the fieldhouse, the fitness areas, gymnastics, and the two pools. We have a separate little access point here for the equipment and the chemicals for the pools. We're going to have a sidewalk that goes up to the existing outdoor patio. And this option has the existing pool fitted out for gymnastics. As you can see, we are living within all of the setbacks. No variances are required for this to move forward. Here is a floor plan that shows greater detail. Coming in the entry, having a very strong single point of entry, front desk, that will check people in and also monitor everyone that's coming and going, and also will be involved with whatever concessions and vending we want to keep at this entrance. We will have a large strength and training condi, you know, fitness equipment right here in the, right in the entry with lots of glass and views. All of the gray are areas we are not touching, that we are not renovating. In order to stay within our nine point five million dollars, we needed to limit the amount of renovation. We're going to have a spin studio here. We're going to have an administrative suite. We're going to replace the Herbeck Room that is currently in this location and put it here. A strong need for a large multipurpose room. This will be slightly larger than the existing Herbeck Room, so we'll be able to meet the needs. Those coming in can also go directly into gymnastics. This space is the old pool, and that will be the gymnastics facility. We also then have a number of locker rooms. We have a family-changing locker room where a father could come with two daughters. Large families could come. Whatever the dynamics are, you can come in and access lockers and change and access directly to the pool. There's also a women's locker room and a men's locker room. There's a multipurpose room right here by the entrance. This is a, a meeting room, but also can be a great location to rent out for birthday parties for the kids who want to use all of the amenities here at the rec center, as well as the pools. We're going to have a large two-story playground that is adjacent to the multipurpose room and the pools. And we have two pools. This larger pool is a lap swimming, six lanes. It's the size that can accommodate a swim club to practice. It has a deep end here that will be twelve feet deep with a climbing wall. We're going to have slides, and we're also proposing a ninja warrior setup that goes across the pool that is lowered from the ceiling. And that will be a, a real feature that can have its own competitions it, within the community for the older swimmers. We have a, a large hot tub spa over here, intentionally placed sort of in the corner out of the waist to, to not, so that it can, we can keep the children away from it. And a zero entry, what we call zero entry, just gently sloping from the deck for a shallow area for young children. There's a variety of depths in this pool that will be used for learn-to-swim. And then this is a channel that has a current. And while it's fun for kids to play in the current, it's extremely therapeutic to walk against the current if you have hip or knee issues as therapy, to walk against the current. So we're really providing pool amenities for three generations of New Ulm residents. This shows a little more detail there with the playground, the deck showers, the locker rooms, the spa, the fountains and play area for toddlers, the learn-to-swim and multi-use areas that go anywhere from three feet to four and a half feet in depth, the current channel. This is the ninja warrior course that comes down from the ceiling, six lanes of competitive swimming. The, the lines that separate lanes, if you've The, the lines that separate lanes, if you've been to pools, you'll notice them many times, are these big spools of plastic lines that cover the deck space. We are going to have under-deck line storage. So when they're not in use, they go into storage areas under the deck, and they're not in the way. And then you just pull them out when you need them for, for learn, for lap swimming. And this shows the two slides and the climbing wall. This is a blow-up area of the entry and the welcome desk and concessions and vending. We see some seating in here and for parents that are either waiting for their kids from gymnastics or from swim lessons or any other areas that people might be participating in the rec center. And this shows the amount of fitness equipment we're anticipating here in this main fitness area. We'll have a taller space here at the entry, what we're referring to as the atrium. And this is a layout of the existing pool area for gymnastics. There are areas in gymnastics where they need pits in the, in the floor. And we'll be putting those areas in where the deep pool is. So we'll fill the pool up partially and put concrete in. But then they can have the pits. We don't have to dig them a pit. The, the area is already there from the pool. So we'll be able to give them the areas. This shows the pool outline now, the dash line. And so areas that need the pits and need clearances, the existing roof height is ideal for gymnastics and works out great here. We, we've put in a single restroom for the young gymnasts that may need to change when they arrive. We've got opportunity for portable bleachers. And they, that may be, the portable bleachers may be shared between the rec center and gymnastics. They have an office and storage. This shows also the route to the different locker rooms from the entry. And we've thought long and hard about how to phase this project, because if you do multiple phases, it affects the construction estimate because you're bringing in trades multiple times. And we wanted to be able to keep the existing pool in operation while we build the new pool so that you don't have any lost revenue from that. So what we're proposing is building the addition first in blue, keeping the existing pool in operation, and it's, doesn't get taken out of operation until the, until the new pools are functional. So there's always pools available to the community. Then, after the new pools are complete and occupied, would come in and renovate that for gymnastics. There's also areas within the existing building. This filter room, for example, runs the existing pool, so it has to remain in operation until that pool is down. And so we have worked out a phasing plan, which has been incorporated into R J M's construction cost estimates. And we will keep this entry open while we build all of the new. So we're even getting into that level of detail this early on, because it would affect estimates. And this is the space program. I know that rec staff would probably say, I wish, I wish we could have done more and more and more. But we have a commitment to you what the budget is, and we need to live within that. And so this option maximizes as many features as possible for the city within the nine point five million dollars. And we have a cost estimate that Brad can explain further, because it does include in it some contingencies and escalation. You can see that it is ten million, which would be five hundred thousand dollars over the budget, but within that, we have one million one in escalation and contingency. So we will continue to work within our nine point five million dollar budget as we make, continue to make design decisions. And as the design documents continue to be refined, this contingency would be reduced. Are there any questions or anything you'd like me to go back to?
Anybody have any questions? I guess I like if we stay within the budget.
Yes, that's our intent. The advantage of having the construction manager on board early with us now is to continue, to continually be looking at the estimates, looking at the evolution of our documents, and helping us stay on budget.
Good. I like the concept of it. I think it's good. Like I say, if we can stay within budget, move forward.
I'm just going to add, you know, we, we worked on this for about six months.
Yep.
And we, we started one of our first meetings, we were over twenty million. And then we had to get down fifty percent. And this is trying to accommodate everything that the community wanted. This is how we ended up with this. And if we wanted to build all the small additions, they added up to around twenty million. And so by repurposing some of them, we're giving, giving and taking a little bit. So that's why we ended up with a new pool, and then we had the, the issues with the setbacks for the property and things of that nature, so.
Just like to add, you know, with this project, we're not actually, we're not losing any amenities either from our current building. So all the racquetball courts will still be there, the track will still be there, and, you know, the basketball court. So, you know, realistically fitting the, within the scope of the work, I think we did. Staff did a really good job. J L G did a really good job, and the committee did a good job of putting everything together and not losing anything that we currently have. So it's pretty much all addition and no subtraction.
And as I said on the schedule, we are on target to continue to refine these documents for bidding and start construction next spring.
No, I think it's a good idea to bid it during the winter. We're going to get a heck of a lot better deal, I think. Anybody else have anything?
I can, I guess, I had, sit on that committee, the Oversight Committee and the Rec Committee. And it's really been a collaborative effort, and I have to really commend staff for really tossing around a lot of ideas. I mean, there was a lot of things being tossed around, and to narrow it down, I think we've gotten everything we wanted.
Good. Well, Dot, entertain a motion?
Motion to approve the renewed Recreation Center conceptual schematic design and authorize proceeding to the next design phase and call design development.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any more discussion?
Keep it at nine point five. All right, Charles.
Yeah, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Balls no, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item six point one, accept a federal grant offer for the airport improvements. Mr. Kaler.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. This is a, a small grant offer, thirty-one thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars federal, to cover some federal expenses that, work at the airport was a wildlife hazard assessment and an airfield pavement maintenance project, the engineering side of that, which had previously been approved by the city council. There will be an additional state grant that will follow this, but this is the start of the reimbursement process.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Steve? See none? Entertain a resolution.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, accepting the grant.
Second. We have a motion in a second, offer resolution, waived reading. Any more discussion? See a none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item six point two, set a special assessment interest rate for the project financed by two thousand nine bond, two thousand nineteen bonds, sorry.
Counselors, this is something we do every year just to set that rate. It's based on the interest rate that we get for the bonds, and we generally add around two percent to that. So this year, the bonds came in at one point four four percent for an interest rate. So we've, we're advising a three point four percent interest rate on the assessments for the year.
Thank you. Any questions for the call?
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, setting an interest rate of three point forty, three point four percent for special assessments levied for projects financed by general obligation, permanent improvement revolving fund bonds, series two thousand nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, offer resolution, waived reading. Any more discussion?
I like the interest rate.
Yeah, it's good. Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item six point three, American Legion Extend Liquor License for Cancer Benefit Event. And that is for September fifth at five to eight P M. on Thursday, two thousand nineteen.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, authorizing the request.
Second. We have a motion in a second, offer resolution, waived reading. Any more discussion? See a none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. No more business, meeting adjourned.